Before we move towards our session. Please tell me now, I am assuming all of you have filled the form for the exam. How many of you have gone through the exam syllabus that was published? Yes, just raise your hand or type a yes, either or. Okay, this is great, all of you have gone through it, which is really great. Whoever has not gone through it, I would request you all to please go through the syllabus. We will also be discussing it today, but it is very, very important. So we will just quickly have a syllabus overview. Now, if you know, for those who have gone through it and for those who haven't. The syllabus is divided into two parts, that is your part A and part B. Now, if you see part A. Jo bhi aapka part A hai exam ka, that will be of your general knowledge related to Rajasthan. Where does your part B, that is there, will be of the subject related to planning, okay? Now, just before that, tell me how many of you are comfortable in English or Hindi or both is okay? Okay. Okay, thank you. So I will be using both the languages. So I hope you all are aware about the division or the bifurcation of the syllabus into part A and part B for your exam. Now, if you see the marking system, ya phir jo bhi aapka marking system hoga ismein, that is primarily. Your paper A consists of forty questions for forty marks. And paper B jo hoga will have hundred and ten questions for hundred and ten marks. So total exam aapka jo hoga will be of one fifty marks. Okay, and you will get total one fifty minutes, that is one question, one minute. Now, before moving on to our syllable discussion. I would just like to tell you guys ki, please wait till the end of the session. Because we have a free giveaway for all of you whoever is attending the session today. To please end tak rukiyen because we have something jo aapke faade ke liye hi hoga. Exam ke preparation ke hisaab se. Chalo, so now looking at the part A syllabus. If you see, it talks about a lot of history, culture and heritage of Rajasthan. To ismein jo padne ka zarurat hai ya whatever is important from this aspect. Is let's say for example the history, right? So history is basically right from the pre-early history, okay? It is not sirf independence ka history ya phir post-independence history. It's right from the ancient times till let's say your ancient. Medieval. Modern. And post-independence history, all of that is included or expected to know, right? Iske baad various tribal movements ya phir jo integration of Rajasthan tha. All of this is what you are expected to be studying. Other than that, the architecture, now I am sure most of you being students from architecture. About planning ka knowledge bhi hoga. To ye jo part hai, somewhere around, somewhere you will be little more aware about this, right? In terms of architecture, let's say, but it's not only confined to architecture. Architecture ke alawa jo baaki ka art and culture hai. Like the folk music, paintings, musical instruments, right? The drama, dance, ye sab bhi padna zaruri hai in this, right? Other than that, even your language and literature, these are also very important. Now, moving on to the geography and the natural resources part. You need to also go through the physical features, pura geography right from. The let's say the physical features, the climatic conditions, the agriculture part. And your demographics, to aapka population study, all of these aspects. Your soil types, forests, other than that whatever disaster management things related to it. Like floods, droughts, right, deforestation, pollution, all these are also very important. And the third part or the most important part in your part A. Which a lot of us find difficult at times is your current events issue Rajasthan. Right, because a lot of times, hume aadat nahi hoti hai ki to study the current events or read daily newspaper. If you guys are reading it daily, well and good, it's great, but. Suggest you can start your current event reading or your newspaper reading right away. Now, other than that, let's say in current events or your daily GK part. You also need to study about the various organizations. Like the Bureau of Indian Standards or the Agricultural Research Institutes. What is the World Health Organization and so on and so forth. Now, moving on to your part B of the syllabus. In this, if you see, this is directly, I have just copied it from your PDF that was published. If you see, there is a lot of details that they have given. Now, just if we quickly go through this also. Ye dekhe kya lag raha hai ya phir you know, what is the. What do you say? What do you feel after just going through this entire syllabus or all these slides, let's say? You all can just unmute yourselves and tell as well. Yes, Vikash, the syllabus seems quite vast. Anybody else? Yes, you all can speak as well. Okay, only quite vast, what about others? Yes. Bahavesh. Swati. Gopi. Anuj Kirtika. Yes. Planning oriented syllabus need to understand Rajasthan state, yes Akshay. You guys can unmute and speak as well or you can just share your views in the chat box. Amit. Ashish, Bahavesh. Yes, quickly, quickly. Yes, naive. Are you trying to say something? We're not able to hear you. Okay. Is your current, okay, wide engineering, architecture, planning syllabus. Okay, is your current situation something like this after just going through that syllabus quickly? Yes, no? Yes. No, okay, great, Abhishek. Yes, kind of, yes, and it is okay to be in. We need to do primarily. Okay, now, if you see. Can you, okay, can you do something of this or that finish the entire syllabus in a day? Or how you know, put the entire cake in your mouth? No, correct? Yes? Guys, I need you all to be very responsive and little more interactive. Okay, right, so what do you think should be the strategy? So primarily, if you see this, looking at the entire syllabus, this is what our condition was. And we know that we cannot. Complete or eat or cannot complete the entire syllabus right in one day, two days, no, right? So yes, like Vikash, Ashish are saying, divide and structure it properly, very good. So if you see primarily for the part B. Here, what we've done is we can divide the entire syllabus into around thirteen parts, right? And then, like you guys are saying, we can go one by one very, very strategically. So let's just go one by one now, if you all have seen this syllabus as well. We can, the major part or the major portion for your syllabus is the planning part. So in this case, we can divide the planning into, planning part into various sections. Likewise. You can have your housing wherein you know, if you divide these take one by one topic each day, let's say. Or as per whatever schedule you want to prepare for yourself, it is very. Bill and it will be, it will. Did for you in terms of your studies, so let's. History, now since some planners finished your masters, right? I am sure you all must have gone through even this garden city concept, let's say, or. Giddie's and tried or neighborhood unit concept, even at maybe your architecture level and so on. So divide the syllabus into various parts, if you want, you can just take a screenshot of this as well. So that it is much sorted or we will also share a PDF with you in the WhatsApp group. So that way you can divide this entire syllabus into. Go one by one each topic, cover all these thirteen topics that are there. Right? Now, because if you see, if you don't divide it, it is going to be quite, quite difficult. Other than that, now once you are done with dividing the entire syllabus into all these parts. What should be the other strategy now? Yes? What should be the other strategy, can you all, what do you all have in mind or what do you all think of? Okay, mock test directly. Okay. No section wise, collecting the study material, yes? Topic wise, main point, last year questions, correct? Yes, so the most important thing. I am sure and I am hoping this should not be anybody's case, right, one day before the exam, right? So, in terms of your strategy, we can have a twofold strategy. That is one at a macro level and the other one at a micro level. So if you see for a macro level, now we know that part B consists of hundred and ten marks, right? So primarily start with your part B because this has larger portion of marks or more scoring part, right? And then, once you are done with your part B, then move on to part A as this has lesser weighted, correct? Now, in terms of let's say part B also. What should be the first priority in covering the syllabus? First finish of all your planning part because primarily this is a planning exam. So of course, the main focus of the questions and everything will be on the planning part, right? Then you, of course, you have other allied things or allied subjects related to planning. Like you have your housing, transportation policy, transportation planning policies in India and so on. Now, once this is done. Your second priority should be finishing the other topics. Now, I am sure you all must be having a question in mind. That ma'am, how are you saying that this should be the second priority, why not first? Yes? Anybody has this question? Ki why, why not have environment, climate as my first priority and then. Do planning and planning history or policies, housing etcetera later on, yes? So the primary reason of how we know or why we are saying that you should finish. Part first is basically the previous year. Questions, right? So now, like somebody had also said in terms of what should be the strategy, go through previous year questions, collect material etcetera, etcetera. So, please analyze the previous year questions, we will also discuss about it. Now, if you see. Okay, syllabus dekhe kitne logon ko tension a raha hai? Before moving on to the next slide. Okay, just raise your hand or type a yes. Yes, yes, okay, no, yes. Okay, so first of all, jin logo ko bhi tension a raha hai, please relax. Because you have a good amount of time, six months is more than enough if you study consistently daily, okay? Now, please tell me, when is the exam? Yes, what is the exam date? Correct, fifteenth or sixteen June? Somebody saying fifteen, somebody saying sixteen. Yes, so the exam is basically on sixteenth June twenty twenty three, okay? So if you see today, we are on twenty fifth of December. You have good amount of time, you have roughly six months, right, okay? Ya phir mano five months, which is also more than enough for you to cover the entire syllabus, practice your mock tests and. So I'll just tell you how, okay, now whatever strategy I am going to be discussing, it is not a. Magic pill or you know, hard and fast thing that you have to follow this only. You are free to formulate your own strategy. Aap jo strategy banana chahte hai, aap bana sakta hai, jo aapke hisaab se aapke liye beneficial hoga. So whatever we are sharing today is just a suggestion, right? Ki bhi nahi ki aap sirf yahi strategy follow kijiye ya phir ye karoge. Karoge, no, nothing like that, it is not a magic pill. We will also discuss ki what all factors will help you in, you know, sailing through the exam. So chalo, today we are on twenty fifth of December. Use the next entire week to do your previous year question and detail. Ismein aapko dekhna kya kya hai in terms of previous year question and analysis. First is, which topic? Okay, which topic are the maximum number of questions? So let's say maybe urban planning, transportation planning, housing or policies or slum development or whatever it is. Find out that first and foremost, from your respective analysis, we have done our own analysis. But I would like you all to do it for yourself, so that will also help you. Secondly, try and understand the depth of the questions. Because if you see, right, you've seen the syllabus, you don't have to do a PhD in this, right? So try and understand ki konse level tak isme padhaii karni hai. Konse depth tak we have to study, what all do we need to remember from this aspect? These are the two most important things. This will help you completely formulate your strategy and change the entire game. So please use this entire week, okay? To do your analysis, after that. Let's say from January, maybe you can start with your planning part. What you can also do is, let's say, the entire three weeks, complete your planning. And the last week may be planning history or however, so entire January dedicated to planning part. From Monday to Saturday, maybe Sunday you can take a break or just revise what you've done throughout the week. So that will also help you to keep yourself updated and in the loop. Nahi to aise hoga ki, thik hai abhi padhaii karliye, January mein, Feb, March mein, April mein jaane tak. Aap, aapne jo January mein padha hai, that also you will forget. So it's better to use your Sundays or for your revision or however, whichever day is suitable for you likewise. Now, through this entire three, four months, if you see the planning legislation and policies in India part, right? So that is a lot of acts and facts and figures, right? And that is something that will not be finished in one day, two days, it is very vast. So what you can do is your planning legislation. Policies. In India. And your current affairs. Do it daily, all these three have to be done daily from January till your June sixteenth, okay? Because this is vast and it will take long to finish, but it's not impossible at all, right? Now, once you are done roughly with your planning part by January end. You can move on to the other aspects in your first priority list, that is housing. Or maybe take two weeks for housing because if you see, there are a lot of questions on housing as well. Another two weeks for transportation planning. Then in March, you can move on to your urban governance part, right? So let's say by Feb, you are done with your priority list one, okay? So here, your priority one. Is done completely. In March, you start with the priority two list. The topics, jispe thode kam questions aate hai as compared to the planning part. That is, let's say, take one week for urban governance, two weeks for your environment, climate and disaster management. And another two weeks for building construction, infrastructure and society, okay? Now, if you see, don't go too much in detail for building construction because that is primarily your architectural part. And this is a planning exam, please keep that in mind. And also when you are studying, please keep it in mind that you don't have to do a PhD or write a thesis or something. So don't do too much detail, important is your previous years papers, okay? Now, let's say by March, you are done with your part B, okay? After that. Move on to your party because this is something which has less weighted. Firstly, right? Secondly, ye aisi cheez hai jo even let's say you study by January, right? By the time you reach May, you will forget them, you will not be able to remember, okay? So, since this has less weighted and these are very volatile in terms of memorization. You can keep these for the later part when you have finished off your major portion, right? And then in May, what you can do is just solve all your test series, analyze them. And revise everything again and again. Because in any of these exams, the revision is the main key, right? So what is important here is also the test series. Analysis. In terms of where did you go wrong? Which question did you go mark wrong or whatever, that analysis is very important. Sirf test series de diya, score okay, itna aaya maybe hundred, hundred and ten or whatever. Or khatam baat paper rak diya side me, don't do that, try and analyze. Where you are going wrong and try and rework on that part, okay? And moving on to your June, don't solve any paper in June, okay? Don't solve any paper in June, just use this for your revision. Clear? So if you see for your December, we will do your previous year question analysis. January, complete planning part. February, other part of your priority list one. March, for your list two. April. For part A. May, for your tests. And revision. And June, only for your revision. I hope this is clear for most of you. Yes, anybody has any queries, I hope this helps, right? Jin logo ko tension a raha hai ya phir kya kare, kaise kare? Correct? So take your time, even if you dedicate, let's say four hours each day, it is very much doable. Okay, now. Moving on to the next part. How do we manage all this, right? So firstly, management of the examination is a twofold process. Primarily, like we discussed, analysis of your previous year questions. Understanding the concepts, comprehensive study, focusing or practicing your numericals and mock test is very, very important. Out of these, these two are your total game changers for the exam. But on the personal front, what is also important is having that consistency and self-discipline. And very, very important is not be bothered or not be worried about how much your friend has finished, okay? Focus rather than that focus on your weaknesses, identify what is my weakness, where am I going wrong? Okay, maybe I am not able to remember some part or something, right? So focused on that, find out your weaknesses and work on them rather than being worried. About how much your friend has finished, what is, what are they doing or this and that, don't be bothered, right? And if you have this consistency and self-discipline, it's, you, you will easily sail through. So don't be worried, tension mat le jia, it is very much doable. Now, before we go on to the giveaway. We would just like to tell you all that exam assure is launching another three months program. Starting from the second of January for this exam. And it will be more of live classes, specially curated for this exam. Focusing on importance and key, key scoring points. And the pricing will not be fifteen to hundred, it's only for triple nine eight. And the faculty that we have are all aluminized of STAs, IITs, NITs. Wherein we will also be having mock tests and detailed discussions for the same. You will also be able to access all the recorded lectures and so on till the exam is done, okay? So in this entire course, what you will get is probably, let's say, this is your current situation right now. It will be much more sorted by the end. Now, for the giveaway. If you see, okay, any queries regarding the course, I will just address it towards the end of the session, okay? Now, for the free giveaway, if you all have realized, I did not discuss in detail about part A. Right, in the, like we discussed about part B. So, for your part A, what we have done is sorted out the study material for you guys. In terms of each topic and which books can you refer to. So primarily for the history part or all of the party. The main books are your Rajasthan state. The main books are your Rajasthan state board. Books, okay, these are like the bibles for your party. I don't think anything more will be required once you go through these, so let's say for example. Your visual art of Rajasthan part, your class ten history and culture book is very, very important, if you see. All this entire list, this class ten history book, right, class ten history and culture. This book is very, very important and this covers most of the topics for the history and culture part. So your, if you see it also covers your religious cults or folk duties. Or even the instruments, folk music, musical instruments, folk and drama, so on and so forth, so we've also. Uh put across which chapter can you refer to in this case for the entire topic? Each topic in detail. Okay, so if you all want, you all can take a screenshot of this as well. Then, for your geography part, you have. Your class nine social science, class eleven geography, class ten social science and class twelve geography books. Which are primarily the four most important books for geography. For one, another topic, you have the class eleven economics book, which is important for only one chapter basically. So in geography, right from your physical features of geography to demographics, all of this is covered in these four books. Okay, that is your social science class nine and ten and geography class eleven and class twelve. So please take screenshots of this, uh we will also be sharing the PDFs as well, okay? Now for example, if you see even in the lakes, right, this topic of major rivers and lakes and so on. The detail, the amount of detailing that has been given in these books, right from uh the types of lakes. Let's say the salt water lake. Lakes of Rajasthan or the sweet water lakes of Rajasthan. So other than these Rajasthan state board books, uh I do not think you will need. Uh have the need to refer to other extra study materials, so first just go through this, cover it up, right? And then we can move on to if needed the extra part, but I do not think that will also be needed. Now, in terms of your uh. But yes, this also again is your part of geography, right, renewable, non-renewable resources and so on. And in terms of your uh. Current events part, for the important persons of the state of Rajasthan, you can refer to class nine social science book, chapter seven. Which covers most of it and as far as the current events and so on, international uh national events for this. Your daily newspaper reading. Is something that will help you tremendously. Let's say Bureau of Indian Standards or the Council of Agricultural Research, Apeeda. Export Inspection Council, F A O, W H O, so on and so for W T O, World Trade Organization. For these, basic what you can do is just go to their website. Refer the about us part. Make your own notes. Making your own notes for the entire process of this exam is going to help you tremendously. Okay? And as far as the schemes and initiatives concerned, let's say for Rajasthan or maybe at a national level. You can refer the government websites. Now why am I saying directly go to the websites in both these cases? Right, rather than going and reading some book which somebody has published or something, these are the most authentic sources. That you have at hand and free of cost, so you can go here and refer, make your own notes, that will be. Pretty much helpful. So, thank you for being present over here, now, uh. Yes, these are the results of exam assure from the last year twenty twenty one assistant town planning exam and. Another thing that like we said, right, you can download the material, the study material from our website. So the link will be put in the chat box. Yes, so here it is, you can click on these links and you can go to the site and you can also. Download the study material, I will just share my screen again and I will show you that as well. Okay, uh is my screen visible to all? Yes, right, okay, so here uh by clicking on the link in that chat box. You will come to this free study material part, but before that if you want to enroll for the costs, here are the details for the new batch as well. So for the part A, here you have the class twelve history geography, class eleven economics. Class eleven geography book, class ten social science, history and culture, this is the most important book, don't. Uh I mean this will cover major portion of your history, okay? Then you have your social science part, right? So all of this can be downloaded and for part B, if you see, if you just click on it. Uh for the planning part, whatever free resources that are there, let's say. All the needed government policies and so on and so forth, right? Which are needed for this exam, we have compiled all of them and put it in one folder at one place for you guys. So you can click on that and download it, other than that, we are also sharing the solved. Two thousand eleven paper with detailed explanation, right? So here you can see that and also this paper has been segregated topic wise, let's say history. Urban planning, development theories, so on and so forth. Okay, in case if anybody has any other queries, may please ask.